Could buy her place if we wanted, but you know, I own that place at the Jersey Shore. If it were like six years later, five, five to 10 years later, and I really wasn't going to work anymore, we would buy it. Sell Nashua and buy that and be there and win it, you know, without question, but.
There's a Connecticut for six months, I'd sell it for four for six.
All right. I have 6:30. Are you guys ready to go?
Yeah.
Could you tap on the door?
Yes.
All right. Could I ask one of you to get the door there? All right. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Jack Courier. I serve as the Chair of the Nashua Zoning Board. This is the Nashua Zoning Board. If you're here for the Board of Aldermen, that's on the second floor down below. If you don't already have and would like a copy of the agenda, it's on that wooden table over there, so feel free to please grab a copy so you can see the three applicants that are on our schedule tonight. And before we get going, I'll spend a few minutes to go over the rules and regulations. First of all, if you have a cellphone, I'd ask that you silence it like I'm doing to mine right now, and/or put it on the vibrate mode. This meeting is recorded actually in three venues. It's recorded on video, so the cameras are running now, and it'll be replayed on Nashua local TV later this week probably. There's also an audio recording that will be put on to the NashuaNewHampshire.gov website, and you can click down to the zoning board. In a few days, it'll be there for you to listen to the entire meeting if you wish. And actually, the official transcription is a written transcription, which is what we use for the court records. That's actually the official transcription. So first of all, I ask that only one person speaks at a time, and who's ever speaking needs to speak into the microphone. So anybody testifying tonight in the audience will be there at that microphone. I'll also be asking that you give your name and address, and if the spelling of your name isn't obvious, at least to me, I'll ask you to kindly spell that so we can get the record right. So first, I'd like to go over, we're hearing tonight, applications for variances, just variances. And if you weren't aware, what a variance is, a variance is a request to deviate from this big, thick book of Nashua zoning laws. Pretty much every town in New Hampshire has their own zoning laws. It's recognized by the state, and the state asks that each town have a zoning board, because there's often a lot of questions and exceptions asked, and that's why zoning boards like us are created. Again, my name's Jack Courier. We all live here in Nashua and volunteer on this board. We're appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the Board of Aldermen. To my right is Mr. Jay Welch, who's a member. And going around the table, we have Mr. JP Boucher, who serves as our Vice Chair, and he is also our acting clerk tonight. Is that right? Yes, because Mary Ellen McKay is not here. And going around, we have Mr. Robert Shaw, Mr. Steve Lionell, and alternate member Kathy Vitale. To my left is Mr. Carter Falk, and he serves in City Hall as Deputy Planning Manager. So by New Hampshire law, this board is required to hear five criteria to grant a variance. And I'll briefly tick through what that five criteria is. Number one is that the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. Number two is that the spirit of the ordinance is observed. Number three is that substantial justice is done. Four, the value of surrounding properties are not diminished. And five, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. So also by New Hampshire law, there'll be five voting members on each case, and there'll need a minimum of three voting members to vote in favor of a variance to approve it. Tonight, it's likely that the three full, or five full members will be voting.
No, there's four. Four, we're alternates.
Oh, you're an alternate too. Excuse me. Jay Welch is an alternate?
Yes.
So what we're going to be doing is alternating between Mr. Welch and Ms. Vitale. And I'll say that Ms. Vitale will be voting on the first case, and Mr. Welch on the second, and Ms. Vitale on the third. And the alternate who's not voting will be participating in the conversation, asking questions, and their opinion will also be solicited as we go through the conversation. Each case tonight is, there's two components to each application we hear tonight. The first component is the public hearing. The public hearing is where we hear from you, the public, any party of standing, we are glad to hear and would like to know what's on your mind. And the way this, the testimony works is that the applicant has up to 15 minutes to present their case. We have a timer here that counts down to help keep me on task, that we don't overrun that 15 minutes. You don't have to use the full 15 minutes. I will say that each application has been received in City Hall two weeks in advance. We, as members, get mailed it. We likely site walk each case, but not always. A lot of times, we're familiar with it. So anyway, the applicant will speak for up to 15 minutes, likely have questions by various people up here. And after the applicant has spoken, and his or her testimony is exhausted, we'll hear from any other party who's, would like to speak in favor of the application, so we hear all testimony that's favorable first. The applicant has up to 15 minutes. Any other party speaking in favor after that has up to five minutes to present their case. After we hear all positive testimony, we'll hear all testimony by folks with questions, concerns, or opposition. Everybody with questions, concerns, or opposition has up to five minutes to present their case. If there is opposition, there's not always opposition. If there is opposition, then the applicant will have five minutes back at the microphone to address that opposition. And then, if there is opposition, one and only one person who has spoken in opposition will have the final, will have a final five minutes at the microphone. There's a slight change of order. We have an Alderman with us here tonight, and they meet downstairs shortly, so by our procedure, we'll have here the testimony of the Alderman first, and then he can get on downstairs to his meeting, and then we'll go back to our regularly scheduled agenda. A few other points, I'd like to say that whatever, so after we hear all testimony, that will conclude the public hearing, and then we'll open the public meeting, which is where the six of us up here deliberate on the case, and likely come up to a conclusion, which is favorable, not favorable, or perhaps a table. Sometimes we do that if maybe there's more information needed. So then, the public meeting usually concludes with a vote, and that will end the case that we hear, and we move on to the next case. A couple of points that if, whatever decision we come to, if there's an aggrieved party, the next step for that aggrieved party would be to provide a request for a rehearing, and you have up to 30 days from this meeting to provide a rehearing request, if you're interested to do that, to City Hall, to Mr. Falk. And if you were interested in doing that, you could call him, and he could get you going in the right direction. If a rehearing request on a meeting, or on a case, is obtained by us, we'll act on it within 30 days. And the important issue here is if, if we accept the rehearing request, whatever decision we made is stayed. So say if we approve something, and there's a rehearing request, somebody says, hey, you got it wrong, you should've denied this for this and this and this reason, if we decide to rehear that request, that approval is stayed, and the case starts again. Now, if a rehearing request is submitted, and we don't find merit in that rehearing request, your next venue would be to go to Hillsborough County Superior Court. But what that all boils down to is there's this 30-day window of appeal, and I'll ask each applicant to keep that in mind, because say if an approval or denial is given, it's not really yet the final word because of the appeal process. Let me see. Before we get going, are there any questions anyone has in the audience tonight? No questions? Are we good to get going? All right. Now, the first case, which we're not going to start off right this minute, is Lost 34 LLC. But we have an Alderman, new Alderman, Jettie. Do I have that?
Yes.
Okay. And he is here to speak on case number three. So what I'm going to do is open the public hearing on case number three, so that Alderman Jettie can provide us his testimony, and then we'll get back to our regularly scheduled agenda.
Thank you very much. Thank you for accommodating me. I'm here because I'm the Alderman from Ward Five, which is the ward in which case number three, the school in case number three is located. I have nothing against the school. It's a very fine school. But that should not be the criteria upon which you base your decision whether or not the applicant is a worthy applicant. They are worthy. However, I think you have to start off with a presumption that the ordinance is the will of the people, as passed by the Alderman. And I think you have to presume that the Alderman knew what they were doing when they restricted the sign, the size of the signs in this area. So they're asking for a 32-square-foot sign where only a 12 is allowed. And when I was campaigning, this is an area that received the most complaints, not the school, but that section of West Hollis Street. There are a lot of complaints about the, about the traffic in that area, which has nothing to do with the school, except that they contribute a small bit to it, with people coming, leaving the school, making a left turn onto West Hollis Street. But that's something, they've approached me to try to come up with a solution, and I'm actively involving the Board of Public Works, the Police Department, and the surrounding properties, and trying to come up with a solution to the traffic problem. But it is a congested area. And having, allowing this big sign to be put there, I think adds to the congestion. You've already got, if you've looked at the site, you've already seen, there are several traffic signs there. One of them is a "School Zone 20 Miles per Hour When Children Are Present" sign. There's also other signs relating to trying to move the traffic over from the left lane into the right lane, to allow the left lane to be a left-turn-only lane. It's a difficult area, if you've ever, if you're familiar with it. So I would ask that you deny this request because this, this big sign, I think, is going to add to the feeling of congestion there. And I don't think that, that this property is, is unique, that enforcing the zoning ordinance creates a hardship for the property owner. It's, you know, this neighborhood is a residential neighborhood. The school is surrounded by residences to the north of them. Across the street, there are residences to the south of them. There are residences to the west of them. To the east of them, there's the Maverick Building. But other than that, it's, it's all residences. And the neighborhood has, we're trying to keep the neighborhood a residential neighborhood. And allowing this big sign to be put there, I think, will, will be detrimental to the look of the neighborhood, which is what the sign ordinance is, is trying to achieve, is trying to achieve a certain appearance in this area of the city. They tell me that they need a sign to identify the school, which is a legitimate purpose. But the 12-foot, 12-square-foot sign that is allowed seems to me to be plenty to, to identify the school. You know, the, the parents who go there, bringing their children there, they certainly know where the school is. Vendors that are supplying them with products, maybe the first time, they might miss it. But anybody with a GPS could certainly find it. Right, right next to it, the building next to it has a sign that says 589. They're 591. It doesn't seem to me that we'd be that difficult to find them. And with a 12-square-foot identification sign, what they've proposed, you know, is a big sign, with, with a big logo and, and their name, it seems to me they could put their name very prominently on a 12-square-foot sign. The bottom of the sign, they've provided for like a billboard thing, which is, you know, I think, really contrary to the whole idea of the, of the sign ordinance in, in that area, and would be a blemish, and add to the feeling of congestion there. So I respectfully request that you deny the request for variance.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any questions for the Alderman? I guess I have a question for you. I'm anticipating I might hear tonight that, first of all, I concur, it's a very congested area. It's narrowing two lanes down to one, you know, when you're headed west. So, and we hear that a lot when there's other cases right in this area. In fact, you know, the intersection right up going over the highway has consistently been in the telegraph, is the most accidents is reported by the Nashua Police. But anyway, on this particular site, you know, sometimes we hear, it's a congested site, and therefore a big sign is going to relieve congestion, because it's going to, you know, people are going to see that and won't be making a turn at the last minute. In anticipation of that, I didn't know if you had any thoughts on that, I'd say rather common argument we hear in congested areas.
That the big sign would relieve?
Would relieve congestion. I mean, it's, just wondering what your thought is on, on that.
I think anyone anticipating, you know, anyone going to this school is, I'm assuming is going to have a general idea of where it is, you know, what the address is. They're going, they know it's going to be on the right side of the road. I would think, you know, the GPS would tell them it's coming up. I think if, if they ask directions from the school, the school would tell them it's, you know, 589, 591, right after 589, right after the Maverick Building, that people going there would anticipate that, be in the right lane, and be prepared, be prepared to, be already slowing down to make that turn. And there is, it is a 30 mile an hour zone, reduced to 20, because it's a school zone. So if people are obeying the traffic laws, that should not be a problem.
Okay. Thank you for that. Were there any other questions? I think we're all set, so thanks for your testimony.
Thank you for accommodating me, and thank you, Mr. Prunier.
All right. And with that, I'll close the public hearing for now on case number three. And I'd like to open the public hearing on case number one. The owner is Lost 34 LLC. The applicant is First Sign and Corporate Image Incorporated. It's 34 Franklin Street. The request is a variance to allow a 530-square-foot roof sign where zero square feet is allowed. This was a table from the December 12 meeting. Who is here to present this case? Hi, if you'd like to come and, again, give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Scott Alberton. I live at 107 Hollis Street in Manchester. Appreciate the opportunity to come back and bolster my argument a little bit. And what I tried to do is go and take photographs that would be representative of what the sign would look like from the areas where it could be viewed. And we were able to pretty accurately depict it on the building. And I depicted it at night, because I think that's when it's going to become most prominent. I think during the day, it'll be a lot less visible. We were able to just put it up there, right, just how we think it's going to look. So I'm hoping that this is helpful in having everybody view what it's going to look like and support this request.
All right. Thank you for that. I think we all have these 11-by-17 color printouts with the rendition of Lost 34 on it. Are there any questions for the applicant? No questions?
No.
Mr. Lionell?
I continue to be a little bit uncertain about the substantial justice part. I'm having trouble buying the argument that having illuminated sign on the top of this building would create a sense of community, or have a, have really a worthwhile public purpose. It's, it's out of character for, for the city, out of character for, certainly for that part of the neighborhood. And it's not the sort of thing that I would expect that people, you know, who weren't already living there, would look for it and say, oh, gee, maybe I should, I should get an apartment there. And I, I understand there are differences of opinion there, but that's, that's what's bothering me. Is it, it doesn't seem typical to have an illuminated rooftop sign on a residential development, at least not in my experience.
Well, I think the viewpoint that we're taking is that it's, it's exciting that this property is being redeveloped for residential use, and that it's going to create, really, it's another little neighborhood in Nashua, another, you know, well, significant neighborhood in Nashua. And I think that it's a progressive way of showing that that is there, and that it's a residence, and that it's, the use has changed. And it's, it's definitely a different way to look at things. I think it is in keeping with a lot of the other sides in the city, despite the fact some of them are advertising commercial space. The Milliard Office Complex and One Chestnut Street, and then we've got them representing taverns also, I guess, that have been varianced, and they're larger signs. So I think that for where this is being viewed from, it's sized appropriately, and I think it really does need to be illuminated to, to create that, the kind of nighttime excitement. And I mean, I think that a lot of nightlife is coming back downtown to these cities, and this is when it's going to be viewed. And I, and I'd like to think that somebody would see it and say, wow, I'd really like to live in a place like that. I'd love to have a loft apartment. And I think that's another thing, the distinction between a loft apartment and a garden-style apartment, or something to that effect. Lofts have always been kind of an inner-city conversion of a warehouse space or an industrial space into a loft. And that's what this is celebrating and advertising.
Thank you.
Ms. Vitale?
I don't think there's any problem with the, the look of it, although I don't like the illuminated part of it. I guess what bothers me in this area is that there's, there's a look to this area when you look at it in the night sky that you have here, and it changes that look. And is that, is that a change that, that really is beneficial to that, you know, the Milliard look, which never had illumination of a sign in the past? And, and what makes this property and its redevelopment, which I do think is extremely exciting, and it's going to be a tremendous benefit to the city, but what makes the marketing of this project substantially different, to change that skyline in this, in this area, which it will change the skyline, you know, that look of the buildings, compared to the other mill buildings in that area that are, that are already there, and seem to be able to be, you know, to be marketed without, you know, the need for an illuminated sign on the building?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And again, I've been thinking a lot about signs in the last couple of weeks. And signage, I think, is going to change, because there's so many ways to receive information now about, you know, you can, you can find your way somewhere by GPS. You can look at it, you can look at a property by going to the city website and looking at where a property is. You can get Twitter, you can get Facebook, you can get many different sources of that building. You can go to Google Maps and see what the building looks like.
Right.
And, and so signage, I almost think less is more. And, and it could be understated and have as big of an impact as having more. And, you know, that's, that's just my side. I need to be convinced that that's extremely necessary to change that view of our mill area downtown, which I do think it's great that it's being redone.
Well, you made a good point, that some of the other mill buildings may not require to have an illuminated sign like that. But the very reason that I think it is important is because of the change of use, because it's not like the other mill buildings, you know, not all the mill buildings are being converted into residential. And I think that if you look around the Milliard, there, there are illuminated rooftop signs and illuminated wall signs and whatnot. And, you know, my business is in Manchester, and we've got obviously a lot of mills right up and down the river there. And the one that, that always inspires us when we look at this type of thing is the Pandora sign that was put up there in the 30s. And it was there for so many years. And we recently replicated that typeface in doing a sign for Dine Corporation, which is there. And it creates, it creates an excitement, I think, that, that I think is beneficial to the skyline. It's got to change and evolve. And I don't think that, that it really stands out any more than the other signs that have been allowed. And they've always been illuminated signs on mills, and this just happens to be a residential conversion, which I think makes it even more important, that we have a classy-looking sign up there, and we market it, and we are able to, you know, people are able to find it and identify that it's a big change for Nashua to have that downtown.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts? Mr. Welch have a question for you?
So, I, I think this is a better design than what we saw on the first admission. What's the actual height of this new?
Oh, boy, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay. I know we have the square footage. I just wasn't, I was just kind of curious of how.
I want to say it's a six-foot-tall ladder, but I'm not positive.
Six-foot ladder.
It is six-foot. Okay, thank you.
Okay. And is there a reason why you chose the top versus the side of the building? Because I'm looking at the right side of this building where the bigger windows are, and then as you look to the left, you have smaller windows. And it's a pretty good chunk of brick right in that section. So is there a reason why you couldn't put Lost 34 vertically on that, on the building?
Well, part of the reason is because we have to get this approved through Historic, the National Historic Registry.
Okay.
And we actually had to rein in our design, because we had designed something that was much more retro initially. And they turned us down on that, and requested that we do a simpler typeface. I chose a typeface that, that's, it's an antique typeface, but it's very simple. It's sans serif, and they didn't want us to do anything on the face of the building. And they did approve this, and they do, they do like this design. So we were steered a little bit by that also, to make sure that we were in keeping with the age of the building, and making sure that it went with it historically.
Okay.
Any other questions, Mr. Boucher?
Obviously, the Historic Commission recommended this. And when was that? Do you remember? Do we have a record of that?
It wasn't the city's Historic District Commission.
It's the National Historic Registry.
The National Historic Registry.
Okay.
Yeah, they're just out of the HTC, our HTC.
Okay, so that doesn't even come, they wouldn't even be reviewed by us, just to know. Right, okay. All right, that's what I was trying to figure out. Thank you.
Yep. I guess I have a question. And when you were here before, I was the one who was unsure where the location is, and then you clarified it. And first of all, I appreciate the pictures, because that, that's really great.
No problem.
The, the question I have, and I'd asked this before, but as I look at the rendering here, it's, it's facing the river. You know, it's facing, you know, the park really on the other side of the street, Notre Dame. My French isn't that good, because I think there's a few more words than that. But the bulk of folks seeing the sign, I think it's Water Street, the name of the street, where you kind of come down the ramp. And you're only going in that direction when you're making a left and heading north on Main Street. And I, I'm, I just, are you looking to, you know, to me, it's locals who are on the most local road there is.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I, I... to, you know, to me, it's locals who are on the most local road there is, and I, and the challenge, the struggle that I have, and I'm having a struggle a bit like Mr. Lionel, but I'm not firm either way, is that I, I'm struggling to see like a big benefit that I think that might bring in advertising, because it's just, I see it as really pointing to the, to the local crowd, people in the park, and I'm not sure if, to me, they're going to know what's around them. You know, we have the path, you know, finishing development, and I'm just, it does kind of fly a bit in the face of that as the only illuminated sign, and I'm not convinced one way or the other, but I'm just struggling, and I'm feeling a bit like Mr. Lionel and Ms. Vitale, but again, I'm looking at this thinking that it might be better served on the front of the building, maybe you'd catch passersby there. And I have to say that a couple of the businesses on Main Street downtown have told me that since apartments here have been opening up, they've seen a real uptick in business, and that's a great thing.
Good thing.
So I hope that this does well, I really do. But, you know, as far as a sign, I guess I'm struggling with it, but I don't know, I'm interested to see what others have, and I didn't know if you had any other thoughts to help me support your application.
Sure. Well, we actually oriented it that way so that it would be oriented toward the commercial in the downtown, because there is visibility of that from some spots on Main Street, obviously all the buildings, that all the businesses and everything can see that from where they are. So there is actually quite a bit more visibility than at first you think. Some of it's partially obstructed, and some of it's fleeting, you only see it for a moment or whatever. Another reason why I think it's important that it be a significant sign and that it be sized appropriately for the building, and I didn't really feel like it should be oriented toward the residential on the back, because I felt that would be more offensive than orienting it toward the commercial district. And so I think that it's, you know, that end of the building is a good visibility, it's the prettier end of the building also, better place to put some form of advertising like that. And what I think the real goal here is so that we don't have to have tons of signage all around the building. Just, you know, we've got this, we're putting it up on top and making a statement with it, and the marketing signs that we're putting out, the marketing banners are going to kind of, once again, help to identify the corners of the property and add excitement to it, so that hopefully from a marketing point of view, when people are coming to look at the apartments, it's going to stick with them, they're going to see something that's significant and different, and I hope exciting.
I guess the other question I have is, I'm thinking Clock Tower Place, Cotton Mill, and then the structure that's between Peddler's Daughter and Margarita's, Jackson Falls, what do they have for, do they have similar signage to this, or do they not have any signage like this?
I think for the most part, they have wall signs there, little different building where we don't really have a lot of room for wall signs on this building, especially at that end, because the windows are so significant. I know Clock Tower Place has a large sign up on the clock tower, which is really attractive. Little bit of a different market there, too. I think that we're trying to market this a little bit more as an industrial loft, so we want a different look, I think you need to differentiate your market that way, and so gold-leaf letters on this building wouldn't cut it, they're not period for it, the building's newer than the other buildings. So it kind of does a little bit of a, lofts are very, very exciting to people, and they want that name on their apartment, as opposed to calling it a, the residences, as some of the others do, or an apartment.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, well, thanks for your testimony.
Thank you.
See, is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of the proposed sign at Loft 34? That's 34 Franklin Street. Anybody else in favor? Anybody with questions, concerns, opposition? Going once, going twice. I see no questions, concerns, opposition, so I'll close the public meeting and open, I'm sorry, the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts, Mr. Shaw?
I guess the thing that I haven't been able to get past is basically the lack of permitted rooftop signs in this district. And both Ms. Vitale and I were on the Board of Aldermen when the majority of this land use code was redone, and we spent quite a bit of time on signage at that point in time. And my recollection isn't necessarily specific to what was debated or not at different levels as far as signage allowed in the downtown district, but there was a lot of sensitivity to the whole mixed-use downtown districts. We spent a fair amount of time even on how those should be handled, et cetera, the downtown master plan, so on and so forth. And I guess what, I mean, I actually aesthetically, I like this proposal, I think it's interesting, I think it's well done, but I can't get past the fact that this is almost like some of, we've had some discussions more in terms of like electronic messaging signs and different things in other places, but my whole point is, this is one of those cases where there was, there was, and I believe, clear intent and desire not to do additional, any more rooftop signs in the downtown, and this is fully against the spirit of that. And so I guess, if anything, I feel that this is something that somebody should petition the Aldermen, get somebody to sponsor, and look at whether or not there's a desire to change the land use code in terms of allowance of rooftop signs in downtown. I feel that our approving this would almost, and I know we say it doesn't happen, but to me, there's a certain kind of aspect of, if we start approving rooftop signs, I still feel like the question will be, why shouldn't we be doing that at some other properties that might come along in the future? But I do think it changes the skyline, I do think it is something that I think requires more kind of overall consideration in terms of, from a kind of a master plan type of perspective, what the willingness is to endorse and support rooftop signs downtown. So, to me, you know, and I know there's, I understand the marketing desire and all, but I must say, why not have it, you know, up for just a couple of years and then go back down? I'm sure once it goes up, it will always stay up, and there's investment, all these other things. I would much prefer that it has a facade sign, we understand that appears to be an issue because of the Historic District, I mean Historic Registry. So it seems that, in that sense, that what would be normally kind of a preferred option isn't necessarily really available here, but I just, I simply have trouble and can't get past that. If my colleagues can convince me that we should be considering that, I'll listen, but I just feel right now I can't support this.
Thank you. Ms. Vitale?
I do like the lettering that's picked out for the sign, I do think that part of it fits, so it's not like a lettering thing, it's not out of character that way. I do have a problem with the change that it is, that it's up, you know, that it's on the roof, and I just, I can't get over, I can't get over the necessity of it, that we would do a variance to allow it and the necessity of it. I really, I really, I struggle with that part of it. And it is exciting that this building's being redone. Is it necessary to have a sign to complete the task of them completing the project and bringing the, a change to that neighborhood? I don't think I'm convinced that it is.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel?
Well, I don't like the font, but it looks awfully generic to me, however, that's kind of beside the point. As others have said, the rooftop sign in this district, I'm having trouble getting past that, and I cannot support this proposal.
Mr. Boucher?
Just thoughts right now. I know that we don't have any, any direct relationship with the Federal Historic Commission. And again, this is what the applicant's looking for, but it seems like the applicant's hands are tied in a way, right, because they can't put it on that facade because of whatever situation they're in with this building. I understand the reason why it's over here, because if they were to put it on Franklin Street, there's a very narrow window to see that, right? So you'd have to be actually looking on Franklin Street when you're going by there, because, you know, it's pretty, it's, I think it's one of the darkest streets that we have kind of, you know, it seems dark all the time, right? I just, you know, I know that rooftop signs are not permitted. I generally like the look of it, I don't think it's offensive, I don't, you know, I think that, you know, again, you know, things evolve, right, and they can evolve with, in a way that it's not over the top, and I don't think that this is over the top. And I was always, you know, I'm always curious when I'm listening to this, you know, if this had had, if this building had had, what do you call it, one of those fake mansard faces there, like the way they crumble Main Street, you know, would we, would it be as big, would we be as, considering this to be as difficult of a decision if that was there and they would just put this sign on that roof, on that fake, you know, wall? But that doesn't exist, obviously. So I really don't know where I'm at right now, I'm still listening. What I'm struggling with is, again, I like, I like the look, the font, you know, it's, it is what it is. If I look at the skyline on the day picture, I don't see how it really is totally detrimental to that. And again, the nighttime view, you know, again, I think it's, I find it appealing for the area. And again, I think facing the residential side, I don't think there's any value to that, and I know it's a marketing thing, it's not why I'm making my decision, it's just why I like it is, it identifies the building, it's very simple. I don't suspect that they're going to be coming back looking for our premise signs on the corner of Franklin Street and Main Street to point down the street, this is where it is, I think this is what they're looking at to identify their building. So I'll leave that right now, my thoughts are just right now.
Thank you. Mr. Welch?
So I understand the want behind it, I don't think it's necessary. You know, I do agree that this version of the logo is much improved, and I do like the way it looks, but I don't think it's within the spirit and intent, and I don't think it's, that decision should be made by us, I think it's something that the Aldermen should look at.
Thank you. Yes, I, in looking at this, one of the, a question for Mr. Shaw, is that, don't you work in downtown Manchester?
Yep.
And that is a very different look as you're driving up the highway, because it's kind of plastered with signs on the building.
And I looked at the Pandora sign, actually specifically, it came down off the Pandora Building for a while, was sitting right across from our building at ground level, waiting to be dealt with for several years, and then Dean came in, you know, completely redid the building, and I know the sign was supposed to go somewhere else, but I'm not sure what actually its fate was, but yeah, there's a, there's very much a different feel, lots of those rooftop signs throughout that Mill Yard in Manchester. And it was, it's highly redeveloped into commercial, there's also now a fair amount of that residential happening, similar loft-type apartments, I know Great Sylvan did the ones across the river as well, so there's been a lot of great redevelopment there, but it's just a very different feel to that part of downtown Manchester.
I guess I was asking, because I was struggling with, like, you know, I'm kind of envious, it seems Manchester has done, you know, a lot of development in the downtown, certainly like to do that here, but on the other hand, you know, all of that is, in my mind, a lot of those signs are there because it's facing the highway and it's trying to grab the traffic off the highway. You know, you have this long red brick billboard kind of, let's make use of it, and I, I guess I'm feeling like you are in that if the justification is there because lofts, you know, are slightly, I see that, yeah, they're different than apartments, but, you know, it's still apartments as I look at it, and I feel if the justification is there for this building, it puts it on for every building, and I'm, I like what the Alderman on the other case said, that's what I believe, I take what's in zoning as, let's stick with that unless there's a darn good reason to overrule it, and I'm not finding that here. I think it, it's the start of the change of look, it would be better served to be, this is how we want to have the Riverwalk look be, and if we want rooftop signs, let's go in that direction, and, you know, and everybody can march to that or not, but I'm seeing right now, I take it as a direction, is we don't want rooftop signs, and so I guess I'm, I've been on the fence, I'm getting, feeling more towards not support for this, but I'm still open, I see two hands, Mr. Lionel was up first.
I'm not envious of Manchester, I think Manchester, downtown Manchester is ugly, and I prefer not to be there. I think Nashua, downtown Nashua looks much, much more attractive, and I don't want to see Nashua turn into a Manchester.
All right, thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I was just wondering, this is in a GI mixed-use zone, right? Wait, right? Am I in the right, yeah, right?
Yes, yeah, GI mixed-use, got it.
And it may not make a difference, but if this was a redevelopment and it was redeveloped for, for industrial use, and whether or not it was just one big company or several companies, right, would we feel any different about them wanting to advertise their business?
If you're asking me, my thought would be, if it was truly industrial, like the good old days, I don't know if they'd be looking to, you know, if the cotton mill would be looking, you know, or the manufacturing plant would be looking to get customers in, I think they'd just be doing what they do and, you know, hoping the steam locomotives take it to markets and people buy it, but I think that, you know, maybe that's why there's not rooftop signage, is because that was the intent when zoning came in, it's, you know, industrial, and you don't, you're not really advertising a product, you're building it, I don't know. Perhaps that's why there is no rooftop signage. Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, so I need to correct what I said earlier. So I was referring to this as being in the downtown district, and obviously it's not, it's in a GI, it's adjacent to the downtown district, so I wanted to get that correct on the record, I guess. So it's still obviously not allowed in this district either, and I'd say with its adjacency to downtown, and it's, to me, this feels as much as part of those downtown districts as almost anything can be without being in the downtown district. So to me, I guess, I still feel that my argument is still valid, but to say it absolute regarding the downtown district, I guess I want to note that I was mistaken in that earlier.
Any other thoughts on the case? If not, I'm, you know, I'm not seeing five affirmative votes here, and maybe I'll just move this along by saying, would someone want to make a motion? Mr. Shaw, could I?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion on behalf of owners, Loft 34 LLC, the applicant has first signed a corporate image, the address is 34 Franklin Street. This is for just the one variance that was remaining from the application to allow a 530-square-foot roof sign where zero square feet is allowed, and this is in the GIMU zone. The applicant stated that the need is for this, and the special conditions of the property require the signage when no other means can be. require the signage when no other means can be found, but we have already actually approved the vertical banner signs, which will be on the other part of the building. But this is not within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. Again, rooftop signs are not allowed in this district, this is adjacent to the downtown district, and would, essentially functions as part of the overall downtown. This would significantly change some of the skyline views of this part of the city, and is not something that's allowed even by exception in this district. There's been no real testimony, one way or the other, regarding any, any negative effect at least on surrounding parcel properties, property values of surrounding parcels, excuse me. But it's still, that in of itself is not sufficient. It would not be in the public interest, and substantial justice would not be served to approve this. So I move to deny this area variance request.
Second. Motion on the table with Mr. Shaw to deny, seconded by Mr. Lionel. Is there any discussion on the motion? Again, the voting members here tonight would be Ms. Vitale, Lionel, Shaw, Boucher, and myself. Shaw of hands in favor of the motion to deny, and opposed to deny is, so that's unanimous. So regrettably, we're denying your application, and I think you've heard my spiel about the, if you care to put in a rehearing request, you have up to 30 days to do so, and then that shuts off. All right, with that, I'll close the, first, the public, public meeting on case number one, and I think we're good to keep going. So I'll open the public hearing on case number two. The owner is Scup Realty LLC, the applicant is Capital Sign Group, the address is 323 Daniel Webster Highway, and the request is a variance from land use code 190-97B, and this is to allow graphics on a proposed electronic message center sign, where only three lines of text permitted, are permitted. This is in the highway business zone, Ward 7. And so before we get going, who is here in the audience has an interest in this case? Just those, okay. But you, you're a part of this, okay, because I was going to say you could have that face the audience, but if there's no one else who cares to see it, you could leave it facing as that. So if you'd like to take it away, Mr. Prunier?
You're important tonight, so go and keep that, so you can see it. For the record, my name is Gerald Prunier, I'm an attorney with offices at 20 Trafalgar Square in Nashua, and here representing the applicants and owner this evening. I have with me this evening, Mr. Alan Mello, who's the owner of the property and will testify, and Mr. Damon Erby, who will testify about the sign. I think you have a diagram in your minutes that show you exactly where you, we want the sign. It's at the end of Costco Drive in Daniel Webster Highway, it's right at the corner. And the tenant is Long Jewelers. Long Jewelers' building, as you know, because I know most of, all of you go to see the site, the main entrance is in the back. So we, all we, the more we can do to help direct the people in the back and tell the people what's in that building, the better off we are. And it's also very important to the commercial businesses these days, to, they're competing with the internet, so it's important to tell more than ever before, the public, of what they're offering. And if they can, so the sign itself meets all of the code requirements, so setbacks and so forth. What we're here tonight looking for is graphics. And it's important, the graphics, because if Mr. Curry is coming on Daniel Webster Highway and sees a bracelet, immediately he'll say, my wife would like that, and want to go inside and get it. So it's important that the, we prize ourselves with more of the impulses as far as this is going. As far as the graphics are concerned, I'm going to let Mr. Erby, if I could defer to let Mr. Erby come in and talk about that.
Good evening. My name's Damon Erby, I'm with Capital Sign Group.
You could lift that up a little, just, yeah, there you go, I think it'll stay put once you lift it up.
Representing Alan Mello and Long's Jewelers. As you can see, and as Jerry mentioned, that the sign does meet all the code requirements as far as size and everything, as a matter of fact, it's about 70% of what's allowed by code. And we've done a really nice job as far as the design of the sign, we tied it in with the building colors, and the digital display itself is a high-resolution display, that we would like to use graphics on it, and also text and graphics. But the display itself would be static, so the images would be static and not motion or moving. The images will come up for 15 or 30 seconds at a time, and then just change an image. And that area down there is very congested, I mean, as you mentioned before, that their entrance is on the back of the building, and, you know, and it's close to other large signs and big businesses in the mall, and also by the state line. So you get a lot of traffic there, and I think that this sign would really help drive traffic to their business, going both directions on Daniel Webster Highway. But like I said, it's not that big, as far as a sign goes. And, you know, it's tastefully done, and we just feel like, you know, really appreciate and respect their approval for the variance.
Mr. Lionel?
You mentioned something that had not even occurred to me, which was visibility from those coming northbound on Daniel Webster Highway. Given where it is, it would be really hard to see much of anything there, but it's intention that you're going to have a graphic display on the other side of the sign, too?
Yes, actually, there's some landscaping there, there's a tree there, I think they were going to plan on removing, but with the setback, I believe it's 10 feet from the property line, you'd have pretty good visibility. And the viewing angle on the display and the sign itself is, I believe, 120 degrees.
Certainly, I know coming southbound there, cars are going to have a lot of time to see this sign, because the traffic there never moves.
Right.
But, yeah, I'm glad you said that the graphic would be fixed for a long period of time, 15 to 30 seconds, so in that sense, it would sort of be more like these rolling billboards that I see at, you know, train stations and
Right.
bus stations and things like that.
Right. The JC Deco boards?
Yeah, yeah, that, that kind of thing. I'm not sure if anybody's really going to be able to notice much from the other side, but I suppose it might catch their attention. Okay. You don't have a big arrow that says turn here?
Yeah, I mean, they could, possibly.
Well, you know, given where it is, it's probably not too bad. Of course, then, you got to say, okay, keep the guy who wants the bracelet from keep, driving up and buying it at Costco, but...
Yeah, which is why you really need a sign there for the jewelers.
Yeah, no, I, I think that it, certainly a sign there is useful. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Vitale?
I know the bottom part of the sign, it says tenant ready, and I'm assuming that you're going to have another tenant in the building.
Yes.
Is the sign controlled by the jeweler, or by, will it also have a new tenant information on it? Like, who's, who's controlling the sign?
I believe it's the jeweler. That would be up to, you know, the new tenant as well, if they want to participate in that. But I think primarily the jewelry store.
Okay.
All set, Ms. Vitale?
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. Shaw?
Are you familiar with the specific requirements of our electronic messaging signs right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Three lines of text.
Okay. Because I'm a little bit disturbed to see five lines of text in your sample. So it might have been just oversight, but...
That was an early drawing.
It's one of those things that just, to me, already doesn't make me feel good. So I understand if it's just an oversight, but I'm glad you already knew about that.
Yes, that's, there's a couple revisions to the drawing, that may be the early revision, or early version of it.
Okay. I guess, aside from that, this is, this is almost similar to the previous case in one sense, that our code has been very specific about not allowing graphic, electronic graphic signs of any kind anywhere in the city. And there are some signs out there that are using them illegally, or grandfathered, but then still illegally as redone, but even that being said, it's not allowed, and so I guess what I'm wondering is why your sign, this usage, would rise above that very specific lack of allowance throughout the city right now?
Well, I think we have electronic message centers for advertising purposes, and you are competing with Amazon, these guys are competing, retail's very difficult right now, and a lot of companies are going out of business. And I think any advantage that you have as far as advertising your message to the public is beneficial to that retailer, obviously, that's why they want to do this. But, you know, I think it's just the competition around the area, there's a lot of graphics message centers in the area. So they just want to, you know, you're competing with other retailers for that, for that dollar, and this is pretty much...
Are there? What other ones are you familiar with?
The Jordans sign, Bernie and Phil's, Zimmerman's.
Do they have graphics? I haven't seen graphics on those signs.
They do. And I think Bernie and Phil's even has motion or video background.
I haven't seen that.
I've got some pictures, if you'd like to see them.
Because we approved that Bernie and Phil's sign, I don't remember graphics coming, I don't even remember it being an electronic sign.
I think it does have one, I thought it had the three lines of text, I know McMoulkin has one, they have graphics.
McMoulkin has graphics.
Yeah.
There's a whole story in the McMoulkin one, though. Was not supposed to have the moving graphics it now has.
Like I said, these would be static, and of course, there would be no political messages put on the sign.
I guess I have a question. I have to say that I think, I never really paid attention to that sign till I went to look with this application, but I think you have a very great view, unbelievably good actually, coming northbound, I'm sorry, southbound
Right.
on Daniel Webster Highway, because you're coming down a hill, you have a very big jewelry sign on the side of the building, and really almost right in front of it, you know, the standalone sign starts to cut into the building sign, because, you know, they're both big. So I have to say that, as I drive in that direction, I, I wasn't seeing a need for moving graphics or moving beyond what is permitted in our code. You know, any, any business on the east side of Daniel Webster Highway, you know, is confronted with the same situation of having to make a left turn one way or the other, you know, to get to any business on the northbound. I'm, I'm not seeing any uniqueness in the jewelry sign, or the argument that the business is in the back, that probably is, that's certainly applicable to probably over half the businesses on the, I should say, the west side of Daniel Webster Highway, between the border and probably all the way up to, you know, Royal Ridge, you know, north of Barnes and Noble. I guess it's not really a question, it's just, I'm, I'm not finding the special need to go beyond what, what the aldermen have approved in, in our zoning code, which is the three lines of text. I feel that, you know, if, if there's this Amazon creeping in, that's kind of undercutting the retail environment of Nashua or the northeast, I don't think maybe a zoning restriction on a case-by-case basis, or a zoning variance, is really the right way to address that. But I don't know, that's, that's just where I'm at, but, you know, feel free to help me see it differently.
Well, again, it's, I think it's a multi-tenant building next to another larger Jordans building, and a Costco next to it with the big hill, and just all of the business up and down that street, there's a lot of large signage on that, on that street, with the Pecan Lane Mall and other businesses up and towards Royal Ridge and, not Borders, Barnes and Noble. So I guess what we're looking for is just visibility, you know, that's, like I said, it meets the code per se, and is actually smaller than what is allowed. So he wasn't trying to go over the top with a big, large, giant message center. I just think it was tastefully done, but as far as the message center, you know, again, I just think it's that retailers are, it's going to be tough, and there's so much competition in that area, and other signs that have graphics, so that's, that's their basis, is that they feel like to put that message out there, this is what we do, this is what we offer, we have specials, you know, that's what they're trying to, trying to do here.
Ms. Vitale has a question?
For me, going down the street, the new building looks great, the sign on the side of the building looks great, you know exactly what's there, you know it's fine jewelry.
Right.
I like the size of the sign that you're proposing. I don't think it adds anything to have any graphics to it, I think it's more elegant and looks better to, to me as a consumer, to have it a nice sign without the flash. I don't, I, you can put the three lines of text, I don't think it adds anything. I don't think it tells you anything, other than you get to be just like the neighbors with their three lines of text and their graphics. I think, I think it sets off, the colors are good, everything, you know, I have, I have a hard time seeing any value in it to, to the, to the city. I know we're, we're, you know, it's to use your property, you still have great use of the property, and the sign is great, you know, property values don't take any, they won't make a difference at this point for that. I don't, I don't think it meets the intent of the ordinance to add the graphics. I think it's a great sign without it. Should if you had that painted picture right there on that sign, I think it does a lot more for it. For me as a consumer, coming down the road and seeing three lines of moving around stuff, I think it's over. I think it overdoes it, I think it's much better without it, myself.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Er, is it Erby or Erdy?
Erby.
E-R-B-E?
I-R-B-Y.
Oh, I-R-B-Y, thank you. Mr., did you have a question? Any other questions for Mr. Erby? All right, well, thanks for your testimony, let me see, is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor? Hi, if you'd like to come to the microphone and let us know what's on your mind.
Yes, good evening, I'm Alan Mello, managing member of Scup Realty, owner of the building. I also am a resident here in Nashua. To reiterate what Mr. Prunier and Mr. Erby had said, the main premise for this is the northbound traffic. What we've had the experience of is people will actually transition past the building, and then they'll have to double back in traffic during holiday time. When you come northbound on the highway, because we have the marquee up so high, it is a very elegant picture, but sitting in traffic on the Zimmerman's elevation, if you will, you don't see that coming northbound. you will, you don't see that coming northbound. Also have a vacant unit next door, and that has been some concern with some prospective tenants as far as visibility and how do you transition into Costco Drive and direct them to the back of the building. The biggest reason for this is, as Ms. Vitale has echoed here, we could come in with this sign right now, put the static graphics up, and be out there every season changing that out. The digital sign gives us the ability to change that without going out with a sign company and changing this graphic monthly, if you will. Now, we do not want any motion. We do not want any quick refresh rates. That is not what we're seeking. It's simply the ability to have this sign, put an elegant sign there. Northbound traffic can see that and know where to turn in. Now, the other alternative which we don't want to do in keeping of the building is we could go with a pixelated sign. I don't care for that. With the, with the time and energy and design we've put into the building, I think if we go with that heavy pixelated look, three lines of graphics, I don't think that's in keeping with the design we had. Personal opinion. So that is why we're leaning to getting into a high-resolution graphic like that. The illuminance will be controlled by myself. The schedule will be controlled by myself, and the tenants will have to come to me and get approval for what they're going to put on that sign. I don't mean to impose on Mr. Fark, but I think he can represent to you that I'm pretty proactive with all my properties. I know most of the people by first name in the office and so forth. So if there are issues, they have my personal cell phone numbers. I'm an in-town guy. I'm not an absentee owner and so forth. So if, if there is an issue that arises with this, should the board feel appropriate to give us some relief on this, I'm the fellow who'll be responsible for this. And the other thing too is, in doing this sign, we have reduced what is actually allowed by code, I believe, an excessive half. We could put a much bigger sign there on the corner. It could be static. We've pulled it back. We're trying to keep it elegant. We're trying to keep it in, in, in design of the building and trying to get that nice look. I don't like that pixelated flashing. I don't like that sprawling stuff. This is a static sign. And even talking to the tenant, Mr. Erbe had said fifteen seconds or so, he intends to leave that even longer, five or 10 minutes. Or we could even go with the agreement to say it can only change weekly or monthly. So it's, it's really for the ability to change this graphic and not being out there all the time with the vinyl companies, if you will. So I would be in agreement to put heavy restrictions on that, and I will ultimately be responsible for that.
Thank you. A question for you, Mr. Mello, from Mr. Boucher.
Good evening. The, the lines of text which Mr. Shaw brought up, we're talking a lot about a static picture. It doesn't seem that you're talking too much about putting text there. But if you do put text there, would you be following the three line per code?
Absolutely, yes. If text were to go there, it would be something similar to, and I'm assuming this is going to stay within the three lines, entrance to Long's and possibly a directional arrow or something. But I don't think that's what they want to go for. They want to go for, you're coming up, you, you see the Tom Brady with the football, you're stopped in traffic, oh, there's Long's Jewelers, here's the entrance, we've got the pylon, we've, we've got the directional sign there. So it's, it's a static display. It is no moving graphics, no flash Las Vegas stuff. It's, it's really just a static display is, is the intent of the application.
So you, you mentioned that you would be open to any restriction, and it was a really wide range. So realistically, is it really that wide range? Or what is it that you'd really prefer if we were to discuss this amongst ourselves? A restriction on, let's say we were to go in that direction?
Yes.
You, you went, you know, obviously, as we're talking from 10, 15 minutes that was mentioned, to hours, days, or months. What realistically would you be looking for, or the tenant would be looking for, prefer? What could they live with, I guess, is what's the minimum that they could live with? Because you, you spoke about a wide range.
I did, because I'm, I'm looking for some direction here on what, what possibly would be acceptable to the board. I would say we would have to be static for a day. So they, you have a Cartier watch, statics for a day, midnight it changes over to a Mickey Moto necklace.
So, and that's good, because if we were to talk, and we said a month, we wouldn't want you to have to come back or say, hey, that's not working out.
No, no, I wouldn't, no.
Okay, so a day, a day would be acceptable to you?
Yes.
To you? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Mello? I think we're all set with your testimony. Let's see, is, is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of the proposed sign? 323 Daniel Webster.
I think it's pretty, excuse me, again, Jerry Prunier, I think it's pretty clear that all we're looking for is still graphics, something that we can display. And if you look at the material or the product that is being sold by a jewelry store, it's easy for them to stay with a still graphic, because you can show the watch, you can show the bracelet, you can show the necklace without having to have it spin. So that the product itself really lends itself to still graphics as far as displaying it to the public. Thank you.
All right. Just to check, nobody else to speak in favor anymore of proposed sign? Is there anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition about the proposed sign?
I'm just taking a few things. It's just a technical thing about what we discussed on the-
Hold on. Just make a motion to see if the board's willing to hear some more affirmative testimony by a previous applicant. Does anybody have any issue if we do that?
No.
Okay, why don't you just come and, again, your name and, your name just for the record, so-
Damon Erbe.
Thanks.
This is a Dractronics unit. It's a high-resolution unit. And I was just talking to Mr. Mello about the timing. I would need to confirm with the manufacturer that it could be on for a day. Typically, they like to refresh it every 30 seconds to a minute, because if it's on for a long period of time, the image gets ingrained into the, into the sign. So I don't know if you could, would consider 30-second minimum or one-minute refresh rate?
Well, I guess we'll take that under advisement. Mr. Shaw, question?
Yeah, just, is that something that you would actually be able to get a more certain kind of readout and information from the manufacturer? If we were to, say, perhaps table the case and give you an opportunity to research that and find out if 30 seconds or five minutes or some, you know, what the real recommendation is as far as, you know, kind of understand the whole burn-in kind of-
Right.
-concern. It's just a matter of-
I'm, I'm pretty certain it's five minutes minimum. I'm sorry, maximum, yeah, maximum.
It's LED.
Typically, they change every minute to two minutes with a new image, just because the traffic, traffic's changing, the traffic flow. But I would say, yes, definitely a five-minute maximum, but that's good for the board.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
So again, I don't think there's any opposition to speak tonight, so there isn't. So I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Shaw's, hands up first. Take it away.
So I, I was, I guess I still might be feeling almost a lot of opposition, kind of no matter what, and kind of goes back to, here's my, here's one of my concerns about this, is that are we trying to essentially legislate the way we think a static graphic image sign should be? I think the proposal and the idea of something that is a nice, high-res graphic image that is not video, that has a fairly slow refresh rate, whatever that might be, might be a really good kind of approach to this kind of signage in all sorts of locations in the city, certainly at least the commercial areas, where we've had lots of interest about electronic signs. And so I guess I'm open to what the board is thinking about possibly allowing for something like that right now. But in many ways, quite frankly, it seems to me this is like a perfect opportunity, again, for somebody or somebodies to pursue with the alderman and look at getting legislation passed to change the way this signage is. I mean, that, that sign code and that major part of the overhaul is now a dozen years ago. So a lot has changed in terms of the viability of, you know, and the quality, et cetera, of these high-res type of graphic type of signs. We've also seen these things can get highly abused, whether it's through rapid video-changing, super, super bright type of, you know, displays, all those kind of things. And so I think this looks like it could be a really great example of the way something could be done with a pretty slow refresh rate, whether that's a minute or five minutes or an hour, something where truly you could maybe even sit for a cycle of the traffic on DW there, and you wouldn't see something change, where if you did, it's just like one time while you're trying to get through the light. So it seems like it could be a great approach. I'm just not sure I feel comfortable with us trying to do that here and delving into something, to me, again, that feels like the code is pretty clear about. I would like to support this. I think this could be a great kind of solution. I'm just not sure it's the right way to do it. So just sort of throw that out there and see what the rest of you are thinking.
Mr. Lionel?
I agree with Mr. Shaw. I mean, what this is, is a sort of a small version of these LED billboards that you can see driving into Boston. And certainly, they're attract, they can be attractive, they're less, much less expensive to switch out than traditional billboards. They allow multiple advertisers on a single billboard. All of that's really nice. But as Mr. Shaw says, the current ordinance doesn't allow such things. And I, I'm sympathetic to the desire for something that attracts eyes to the sign, but so will every other business in town. And I also don't want to see us making our own land use code by constantly granting variances to this, which, where it is so clearly against the ordinance. I'm, I was a little uncomfortable with the one that we did last time. And I wish the city would take action against those, the signs that are operating illegally. I don't think I want to go here quite yet.
Thank you. Who else?
So I appreciate what Mr. Shaw and Mr. Lionel just brought up, because I hadn't really thought about it that way. But again, we just had this conversation in the prior case. Because I like the design, I like the look, and I think the application with the static images, even if it's for one minute, would fit the, you know, that corridor in Nashua, that retail corridor. I think it would look good. But again, that fine line of a re, you know, is this, is this something the aldermen should be doing and not us? And, you know, where does that conversation start? So I'm still a little on the fence about, you know, whether it's our decision or someone else's decision to make. But I like the design. You know, I appreciate the fact that it's, it was designed to be, you know, smaller than what they could build without a variance. But I'm still kind of on the fence.
Maybe I'll jump in. You know, I, I have to say that I, I think, you know, the, the owner has a great track record in this city. And I haven't, you know, he's, his organizations have been before us. I think they've met with a lot of approval, and, and I hope his businesses are doing well. It gives me comfort that if this were approved, this would, I think, you know, I think he'd stick to the plan. I don't think it would be like the other dealerships that, next time I drive by, it's not what we approved. But I see it as Mr. Shaw does and as Mr. Lionel. I, I'm not finding uniqueness in the property of where this would, would, you know, warrant a variance. I think it should be done, if anything, across the board. And I'm not convinced that, you know, if the aldermen want to go that way, if someone were to petition them, you know, that, that's their purview. I'm, I'm not, you know, the, just to clarify, the existing ordinance allows three lines of text that can change every five seconds, it's like five seconds, and that, that's far from a graphic, but it's far from the older red dot kind of, you know, looks like an old video game sort of display. So, you know, I, I think the Nashua ordinance is fairly contemporary, and I think it, it's, it's pretty clear that the aldermen didn't want a bunch of graphics. And, and I, that's the way I read it, and that's the way I'm feeling. But I can be convinced otherwise if someone wants to go for that. Is Mr. Ms. Vitale or Penn was in the air?
I have to say, I, I agree with Mr. Shaw. As much as I think this would be a perfect request to do a very static, you know, two to five-minute change on exactly what would come up on the screen, we can use the examples shown just in the picture. It is probably something that needs to, to come from the alderman down to our zoning board to be able to approve it. I, in this case, I don't, I don't see where the three lines of text helps applicant, applicant, but it probably will for, for directional purposes, you know, whatever else. At the moment, if we do decide to go that way, it is one case where, where maybe at a time it can change over if the, the code is changed regarding this topic.
Mr. Boucher?
Just comments I have. You know, I think everybody's voiced their comments are frustration over the fact that I think we've, we've far outgrown the current code for, for graphics or what we, what used to be called graphics. And I think this industry has grown, and I think since I've been on the board, I've definitely seen that change. You know, we all wish that something would, would, would happen with this, and I, you know, sometimes I say that, and I said, we could go another 10 years with no action on this. It doesn't mean that that's the reason why you would approve or disprove something. I, I just think that in some cases, you know, when I look, well, what's the spare intent of the ordinance? And I know what it was when it was written, but if, if we were looking at it today, would this be what we would envision as that? And I know we're not there to write the code. But again, you know, I look at, you know, that spare intent is, you know, is, is it contrary to public interest, that type of thing? And other things that we look at, right? And we're not going to pick one, because we can, we can pick, I look at it as a whole. But just my comments are, is, I, I think that what I struggle with is, is, is that case, that I think we've far outgrown it. And I, and I kind of look at- And I, and I kind of look at, again, just as an example, not, not do it because of that, but what we did recently was, was, had very specific language that said what we were going to approve and what we're going to allow. And I think that, that gives more teeth to our approval than in the past, you know, when it was probably more loose, or, you know, that type of thing. So, I know, Mr. Shaw, you weren't here, but we, we did do something that gave very specific criteria and boundaries to our approval. So, I'm comfortable doing something like that. I understand and completely see the point that you, that you've made, and it's, it's valid. But again, I, I sit here and I, I'm trying to look at it like, could we be sitting, and I, I'm exaggerating, but could we be sitting here for another 10 years having this discussion? And, and time moves on, right? And so, again, what's the spirit and intent, what, what is it that we're looking for? So, in, in this here, I'm obviously, like most of us, where we, we said we'd be comfortable with this as a, as a static graphic display. And we know the applicant that'd be in control. And you stated it has a good track record here in the city. So, again, I would have no, no reservations in trusting or knowing and being confident that that, what Mr. Mello was saying is actually going to happen. So, those are just comments I'm making. I'm not, that's, you know, not making, I'm not saying one way or the other. I'm just kind of saying that's where I'm at, what, what I'm thinking of.
Sure. Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
So, I guess just for clarification, was the case you were referring to, was that for some sort of electronic messaging sign, and was it specifically images or graphics or something?
Yes. Images.
Okay. So, we have recently approved something, then?
Two weeks ago.
All right. Can somebody help fill me in on what the kind of limitations were in that case?
It was that the graphics couldn't change, what was it? Oh, it was, it was static, it was static images.
I don't think there was a time.
No, but it was, it was no motion. It was a smaller sign.
Static image. It was like a small, it was like 16 or 20 square feet, a little smaller than this one. But I think that, I don't think there was a time stipulation.
Yeah, it was, it was by all means, but no motion.
No motion at all.
No motion.
It would just stay on there, disappear, then a new one would come on.
And then, they was talk about brightness and stuff, so it would always.
That would meet the code.
Yeah, that would meet the code. But we put that language in the motion.
Static message, that.
Yeah. So, we put the specific language in the motion, so that it wasn't, we were not just saying, hey, what, what, are they going to go by the code? We, we specifically stayed in the motion.
I think, wasn't the sign also dealing with multiple tenants was, was part of, I think I've got the wrong word, tenants, but it was a...
It was Peters.
Right.
And it was, the top sign was a regular sign, which identified Peters of Nashua being the owner, the hierarchy owner. And then it was the graphic display, and then it was the bump clinic sign, which is what's actually located, that's the primary business at that property. So, the motion that we had, I thought we did put a time stipulation, or we just said it has to meet the five-second code, or something like that.
And I think we spent more time talking about, make sure there was no, that motion, or it moving.
Yeah.
It would just come on, and come off.
And I think we did say, even the image had to have three, adhere to the three lines in the static image.
I, I'm, and I, I understand this is not a valid argument, but I am concerned that we're just going to be getting an unending series of requests for variances on this issue. And really, I think the alderman, this needs to come from the alderman, because otherwise we're, we're writing our own land use code.
Did you have something to say, Mr. Boucher?
Yeah, and to that point, you, you're right. But the way I look at it is, or the way I, I'm seeing is, is that we are going to see these requests no matter what, I think. Things are going to evolve, and if it, and if, and if it shouldn't be here, then why are we sitting here listening to it, you know?
Mr. Shaw?
I, so, I wanted, I hadn't really actually finished earlier. So, even when we updated the land use code a dozen years or so ago, there already was the capability to do relatively high-res graphics and those kind of things. It was just way more expensive than it is now. So, even that was out there. The ability to do relatively kind of coarse imagery was definitely out there. We were very specific about not wanting anything more than three lines of text that didn't change more than five seconds. There hasn't been action taken to change that, rightly or wrongly, and maybe it will be another 10 years, and, but at the same time, it only takes one alderman, or one person contacting one alderman, to get some legislation started and sponsored, and go through the process, and there could be an updating of this part of the sign code. So, I'm, I think it should happen. I think, and the other thing is, we could have, we could have two or three or five cases every two weeks coming at us, and you know what? We can deny every single one, because it doesn't rise to a level that warrants the sufficient justification to meeting a variance criteria. That should be a message that the land use code should be considered, at least, for updating, and that should move somewhere. Our, our body's work is not to figure out what that code should be. I have my own opinions, and I think I could probably help define the things, but right now, we're just supposed to act on, do these cases, meet the intent, the spirit and intent of the land use code and those ordinances. And so, to me, quite frankly, it doesn't matter if, this is, I think it's actually a great application. I think it's a perfect way to do this. I think adding some time in there, and actually having, it's, it's a, it's a great concept for signs to have a good, clean, crisp graphic image that doesn't change frequently and all that. But I think it needs to be figured out and done through a process, and I don't think this board should be doing that. So, I guess I just, I can't, I'm having trouble supporting it, even as much as I'd like to say three minutes, or five minutes, or a day, or whatever, I think it could be a really good solution. I just don't think it rises to meet the criteria of granting the variance.
Questions? Mr. Welch?
I said I was on the fence before. I think, it's a tough call, right? Because I understand Mr. Shaw saying, I understand Mr. Boucher saying, and I, and I'm kind of leaning towards, I mean, we, we had this conversation two weeks ago, and we, we went in a direction, and we put, you know, very specific language, you know, in the variance. So, I mean, when does it stop? I don't know. You know, it's not like, you know, they're looking to go, you know, add an extra foot, or, you know, go to like a two-foot setback. It's just, you know, a two-minute static image. Or it's them going out there every month and, you know, putting up a, a lens color image, you know? So, it's, you know, I, I think if it's, if the language is right, the applicant has a good history, operating within the city, you know, I, I think I'm kind of leaning towards, we'll give it a shot, and just kind of get it done.
Anybody else want to jump in? Anybody want to make a motion, one way or the other?
Well, it seems that, it looks like there's not support by the majority, so maybe that, that should be the first motion made, to deny.
All right. Let me...
I'll be voting on this case.
Yes, Mr. Welch will be voting, and Boucher, Shaw, Lionel, and Courier. Just to do a little straw poll, I think we have two in favor. I just to say, I'm, I'm not supportive with, with the proper language. Could you just clarify, I think, Mr. Shaw, were you not in support?
Not in support.
And Mr. Lionel?
Not supportive.
With that, maybe I'll make a motion myself. I'm going to make a motion from the owner, Scup Realty. Again, the address is 323 Daniel Webster Highway. The request is a variance to allow graphics on a proposed electronic message center sign where only three lines of text are permitted. I'm making a motion to deny this request. I think the board finds in majority that the variance is not needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, which is to support its existing jewelry business in a very congested area of Daniel Webster Highway. I think the majority of the board finds that the proposed graphics is not within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, and it, it is contrary to public interest, and substantial justice is not served. I think I speak for the majority in saying that, I, I think the board has no comment on affecting property values of surrounding parcels, which are all, also in the HB zone. I think the board finds that the uniqueness of the property is, is not, I should say, is not unique to the area that warrants to have, to exceed the three lines of text, that I think the majority of the board finds that the three lines of text are adequate and up to date as, in the zoning regs, as they're currently published and have been for some years, and that relief is not warranted. And with that, I make a motion to deny. Second to the motion is Mr. Shaw. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, could I see a show of hands in favor of the motion to deny? That would be three. And opposed to the motion of deny would be Mr. Welch and Boucher. So, with that, the motion to deny carries. And with that, I'll close the public meeting on case number two. And we're going to take a five-minute recess here, and then we'll be back on to case number I guess we'll start the public hearing on case number three. The owner is Haven Triple N Investments. The applicant is Microsociety Academy Charter School. The address is 591 West Hollis Street. The request is a variance to allow an identification sign at 32 square feet in size when 12 square feet is permitted. This is in the R9 zone, Ward 5. Again, we had briefly opened the public hearing at the beginning for, for an alderman to testify, and so now, we'll be back to our regular order with the applicant. So, if you'd like to take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, for the record, my name is Gerald Prunier. I'm an attorney with offices at 20 Trafalgar Square in Nashua. I have also with me this evening, the principal of the school, Amy Bottomley, and also one of the directors of the school, Tom Darty, who will be speaking on a short-term basis to bring why we're here for this sign. The purpose of the sign is that this piece of property is all one lot.
You're getting a little far from the mic, would you mind pulling it?
Oh, yeah, I keep forgetting.
There you go. Thank you very much.
Someday I'll have to learn to be a politician. They, they always fight over the mic, who's paying for it. This used to be all one lot, had two buildings. Daphne Hitchcock operated on it, and I think you're all familiar with it and so forth, way back. A while back, we subdivided this into two lots. One of them is the Maverick Company that has this building on Lot 1494, and we have the school on Lot Number 6. The zoning line goes down the middle of the driveway to the two buildings. One is Park Industrial, the other is residential. What is being proposed is to put a sign in this area, meeting the setbacks off of West Hollis Street. You have in your, in your package, I believe, a copy that shows the buildings, the, the area that we're talking about, which would be on really what is the exit of the driveway coming out onto West Hollis Street. You see the, the building in that particular area. You also have a copy of the sign that indicates what we'd like to do is put on the name of the school, and also, as in most schools around the area, put on what's happening in that school, that may be happening in that school that day. It will be internally lit, but there will be changes being made by hand on the sign. So, it's not what we were talking about a few minutes ago about electronic signs. It's not electronic signs. A little while ago, there was some talk, there was some talk about 589 being shown, so where the school is, and that 591 should follow right afterwards. If you look at the sign on, on one of the exhibits, it says 589, even though the nine is a little bit on the thing. Most people believe that 589 is still for the two buildings, it's one area. They look for 591, and 591 is not there. So, we run into quite a few problems with the sign, and we'd like to locate the sign, have a sign on this piece of property. There was some talk by the alderman about having problems in that particular area, the traffic problems. We don't deny that there's some traffic problems. In fact, as we feel, that the sign itself will help solve it. Won't solve all of them, but will help solve some of the problems as to traffic in that particular area. particular area. As you see the building, it still looks like an office building. It's not typically the architecture for a school in that particular area, and confuses a lot of people. The whole purpose is to help the general public, and we'll, and the principal will talk about the general public and what she's run into. So it's actual issues that are involved, and what we want to do is to be able to identify the school with the sign by doing the sign and help the people in this particular area that come to the school and can't find it for one reason or another. And they create more of a traffic problem. They go up the street, they go up to Ledgewood, turn around Ledgewood or Wellesley Street, and they have to turn around, come back, and then they still make the turns in the particular street. So the school, the sign will help. It will also help identifying what the school is doing that particular day or going to be doing. As an example, the size of it is nowhere near the size of Elm Street. You're all familiar with Elm Street Junior High. That sign is twelve feet high. This sign is only seven and a half feet. It meets all the other zoning requirements for the sign except for the square footage. And the square footage is important, as indicated, you, as you come down West Hollis Street, and I've got to tell you, the times that I've traveled West Hollis Street, no one's doing thirty miles an hour coming by. There is, there's a lot of speed. And Ms. Dougherty will talk about the fact that when they put the sign, they wanted the signs for identification so people could see it coming down West Hollis Street. And they consulted with a consultant, and that's why the sign was brought up as, as the size that is proposed. With that, I'd like to ask Ms. Bottomley if she'd come up and speak about why they want the sign.
Hi, Amy Bottomley, Director of Microsociety Academy Charter School. My address is one Roberts Way, Hollis, New Hampshire. Since we've moved into that building, there's a lot of confusion. We get a lot of vendors and solicitors that are trying to go to Maverick or still think we're Dartmouth Hitchcock, because there's only a five eighty-nine Maverick sign. Maverick also has a technical institute that has been approved by the city. The house is about thirty students. There's confusion there. They come over to our building as well. We have had people show up for doctor's appointments. Another issue and concern for me as an administrator is that we have a lot of cut-through walking traffic, and they're unaware that we're a school. They cut through the access road from Stella Stadium in Mines Falls to cut across to neighborhoods. Last year, I had to ask someone to leave. They were intoxicated waiting for a ride on our property. That's concerning when I have students walking out, when I, walking out to recess, and when I pointed out to them that this was a school, they had no idea. Part of the problem is we only have a small playground that is hidden on the far side of the building, so unless you're coming from the Pepperell direction, you would not even notice our playground. Last year, we put a small sign and street numbers on the building itself that fit all the specifications, and it still has not made a difference, which is why we're here asking for something else on the road. The alderman spoke about congestion, and as we've all said, it's an issue. He spoke about school zone signs. The school zone signs that are there were put there specifically for Nashua North. They were, I mean, South. They were never, they were there existing. They were not put up for us, so I do not believe they're correctly, in the correct areas for a public school in a school zone. So that's something else I was looking into is ordinance around school zone signs to slow the traffic down. But we feel like a sign that identifies who we are and that there's children at play and walking home from, to and from school would make people be a little more cautious and slow down, as this is a heavily traveled road for commuting times, and the city has dictated our school times. Unfortunately, we don't. Our hours are nine to three forty. So we also have after-school programs, so we're letting out anywhere from five to six, which is heavy commuting times. So we really do want people to be aware that there's children. Thank you.
Are there any questions from Ms. Bottomley? Ms. Vitale has a question for you.
According to what the sign looks like, you have the area for, to put things up. Is that, because you're talking about the speed on the road and everything, is, is that, you know, needed and?
Yeah, we would like to have the ability to advertise community events just like any other school would, you know, open houses, other, we're also a nonprofit, so to be able to advertise and have events such as, maybe we're gonna have a clothing sale, you know, a repurposed sale so people could buy children's clothes as like a yard sale kind of thing, things like that the schools do all the time. We'd like to be able to advertise and have those purposes too, just around community events and school events.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have a question, Mr. Shaw?
Whether for you or maybe Attorney Prunier or whoever. I guess one of the things I'm a little bit confused about is that the picture shows that basically a sign would be facing onto Hollis Street. So I guess my, what I'm not clear on is if it's really intended to be something that you see driving up, driving either way on West Hollis Street, that you would actually see that sign unless you're kind of turned and looking over there already or trying to find the driveway. So I would have thought it would have been faced perpendicular versus the way it's proposed here, and has that been discussed, I guess, because I'm not seeing how it necessarily supports some of the arguments already made.
I'll let one of my board trustees answer that question.
All right. There's another question for you, Ms. Bottomley.
You were talking about people getting confused with the other building and the street number, and I know that you have it in small print there. Wouldn't it be also logical to make the numbers so that the numbers stand out to be able to call attention if you want people to know exactly where this number is on West Hollis Street? Most people are gonna know they're on West Hollis Street, but just that, that five ninety-one part of it, to call attention to that and the name of the school, and those are the two indicators that it's the school itself. That, again, I know that many schools in the area have the little message part of it. I think they're used less now than when a lot of the schools put them up. It's been over ten years, I think, since almost every elementary school put theirs up, because at that time, there was less ways for people to get their message out for their students, their parents, you know, people that were, are interested in going to something that, although I do see if you were having a coat drive or something, you might call attention to it, you know, by driving by, but again, if...
Well, it's also for reminders for parents. We do have parents, believe it or not, I mean, we are in a certain area of the city that we draw from, and we have parents that don't have technology. So there's other ways that we need to get messages out to them, because we can't push out an email or push out a Facebook announcement. So that's another thing we want to send friendly reminders to our parents that just don't have access.
I have a question. When Mr., the alderman spoke about a twenty-five mile an hour school zone, and then you were saying, is that, were you saying that he was referring to another school area?
I've already spoke with representatives from the city that stated our area is not zoned for a school zone. The area is for Nashua North, is my understanding. So any school zone signs he's referring to were in existence before our building became a school. So I do not believe they're properly placed, so traffic would know in enough time to slow down.
Okay, well, let me just turn, and could you, I'm thinking a question for Mr. Falk here, like, the World Daycare Center on Spitbrook Road, somewhat recently, relatively, got a school zone that flashes twenty miles an hour, just like it does, say, a bicentennial at the input and output times of school. Is that, that's not in effect then in front of this facility here? I mean, I never saw one there, but...
Those, those are regulated by the Department of Public Works, like the Streets Department. We don't really, we never, our planning department never regulates any traffic control signs, like speed limit, stop, yield, speed limit. That's really Public Works, or Board of Public Works and the Board of Aldermen, I believe. That's something we don't really get involved with. As far as like the flashing signs, they're usually all done with a standard size and color and height, and all the dimensions are consistent throughout the city or cities. And we don't really ever get involved with those.
Okay.
Board of Public Works and the Board of Aldermen do.
Okay.
There's none.
Okay.
No flashing, none.
Okay. Where do you draw your students from? I'm not familiar with your facility.
Sure, a lot of our students are from the Ledge and Fairgrounds District. However, the way that charter schools work is it's a lottery, a blind lottery, and we can accept anyone from the state of New Hampshire. I will say, far majority of our students are from the city, and I would say majority are from the Ledge and Fairgrounds Schools.
Okay.
We do have students from all, New Surals, Bicentennial, but more heavily in that area, because it's their neighborhood.
Are there students from outside of, you know, the local neighborhood? I mean, are there, or is it?
Yes.
There are also. I mean, are there kids from Pepperell, or have to be?
Not Massachusetts.
Not Massachusetts.
It's a New Hampshire charter school.
Okay.
So we do have students from Hollis, Brookline, we have Manchester, Oliver, Hudson, Merrimack, so they're coming from different directions, mostly coming from the highway, to be honest.
Okay. The last time I was in that building, I was going to a doctor's appointment. So that's, how long have you been in operation?
So we're, started our third year this year.
Oh, okay.
We weren't in full capacity, and we were late. We were actually at the Greek Orthodox Church down the street when we started our first year, while we completely gutted and redid that building to outfit it as a school. So we've made wonderful improvements to it. We're trying to, you know, keep improving upon it, bringing in the playground, making, having the sign and make it a positive, because it was in terrible shape when we luckily found an investor to take it over for us. But I will say, as a public school, we also pay, we're a public school, however, we're a public charter school, we pay taxes to the city unlike any other public school. It's not waived for us. So there's other expenses we're taking on, such as that and a lease, a hefty lease at that, that a public school would have a city property. So these are all other expenses that we're taking on and been good tenants.
And had you been in operation at another location, or when you came here, was that three years ago, was that the start of this academy?
We're, it's a brand-new startup charter school.
Okay. Well, thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, and we've, you know, we've enjoyed our time in the city. We love everyone in the city, and we've actually had a lot of success, thanks to all the support in the community.
All right. Any other questions from Ms. Bottomley? We have one for Mr. Welch.
Yep. So looking at the proposed sign, it seems to be, in my opinion, a little redundant, because you have the graphic that says Microsociety Academy, and then it says it again, and then it says charter.
In front of me, so...
Okay. I think Mr. Prunier has a copy. Yeah. So you're, you know, you're looking for eight feet.
Yeah, so that's our logo, is the Max with the Microsociety Academy.
And then you're gonna spell it out next to it?
And that's the, yeah, that's the name.
Okay.
I mean, we could talk about how that looks, but, so there'd just be a little history behind the Max logo, or is, we are big in student voice of choice, and all the students helped design that graphic. We had a graphic designer help us do it, but it was all from student input, so the graphic itself with the Microsociety Academy, because it came from students, I would hate to change that.
Would you be open to either or? Because if, you know, if you looked at like a six-foot sign, for example, and you could put the logo on it and then put the charter school and your address, you know, there's a potential that you could, you know?
Yeah.
Redesign that.
As long as the Microsociety Academy charter school piece is clear, yes.
Okay. Any other questions from Ms. Bottomley? Thanks for your testimony. I think we're all set. I think there's someone else here who's gonna speak in favor and...
Good evening. My name is Tom Dougherty.
Could I trouble you to just raise the bar, so to speak? There you go. That's great. I think we'll catch it all now. Thank you.
Tom Dougherty, it's D-O-U-G-H-E-R-T-Y, resident of Merrimack, New Hampshire, thirty-two, Sand Piper Lane. I'm a trustee at the Microsociety Academy Charter School. I wanted to speak very briefly on the intent and spirit of the sign. There were really three design criteria that we were working with Barlow Signs over in Hudson, whom, as you probably know, have done a number of the signs in the area for a lot of the local schools as well as Massachusetts. We wanted to stay in concert with the size and relativity of that sign based on others that they've done in the area, but the three design principles were really around vision and presence, so that people had awareness that there was actually a school there. Secondly was around the reader board, which I know Ms. Vitale had spoken to about maybe not being well utilized, but as Amy pointed out, we are utilizing that piece for our open enrollment periods, because we don't have a, what I would call, steady-state student body as other public schools do. We have to go out to enrollment every year for that lottery system to enunciate and allow students to come in, and part of that reader board is to actually utilize that twice a year to inform parents that are driving by or folks that aren't technically savvy and have access, to let them know when those periods start. And the third piece was really around visibility and safety from the standpoint that, as we're told and informed, roughly three to four hundred feet is the viewing sightline for a sign that's got anywhere between a six and nine-inch letter on the reader board as well as a visual display. So the lettering for the address and the name of the school would be on a structure of six to eight inches. We feel that that was enough for somebody that's about four hundred feet away to recognize that, A, there's a school secondarily, that, you know, we actually get our name out there as well. So there's multiple purpose to that. And I also wanted to address Mr. Shaw's question about the rendering that we created. That is an error. It was to show where it would be in setback, but that's actually a dual-sided sign. So the notion would be from either direction, coming from Pepperell or from Nashua, that they would have visibility to the fact that it is a school property. So hopefully I've helped address at least the intent of what we were trying to do relative to this sign. Are there any questions that I can entertain?
Mr. Shaw?
It'd be kind of similar to what Mr. Welch was asking about a little bit ago, but, I mean, I also kind of, I have some concern still about the overall size, I understand, but I guess one of the things I'm wondering about, especially, you know, as far as redundancy, I think the whole point, the whole argument earlier was at least identifying it as five ninety-one. So if anything, I would actually perhaps suggest, and at the risk of trying to help design your sign, but I would suggest that maybe you just consider getting the five ninety-one on the pillar. And the rest of the West Hollis Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, that's, you're already there. Nobody needs to know that. And then you're, if anything, especially if you're keeping this the same size, you could have bigger letters probably anyhow, or it could just maybe fit in there, be more readable, because you don't have three lines of text, you just have the name of the school. So I think that would probably work better and be more functional in terms of getting, you know, if the whole idea is to capture the fact that it is this charter school, I would suggest something like that as far as just helping improve the purpose and kind of catching people and...
Thank you. I appreciate the comments. We'll definitely take a look at that. That's a, that's a great suggestion.
Just to clarify, when you said the sign's gonna be facing both ways, so the sign is gonna be perpendicular to West Hollis Street, not parallel to West Hollis?
Perpendicular, that's correct, Mr. Courier.
Yeah. I just, it's interesting with Mr. Shaw's comment, it, I think in front of the building of which the eye doctor is in, has a sign just like this, like five oh five, says, has the number real big, and, because, you know, maybe they've changed it, but at least it used to be that way. So I was just saying, I was in concurrence with that, you know, suggestion. I think that would be a benefit for folks catching their eye.
I think the sign you're referring to is at the Stella's entrance, is that correct?
Yeah, the, the building... Yeah, the, the building in front of it.
It's actually, it's actually in front of the building, the 505 West Hollis.
Is it 505?
Yes.
See, see, see that? It was so big, it stuck in my brain. I'm amazed I got that number right.
Well, I must see the same eye doctor.
Good eye doctor. See what? Uh, were there any other questions, uh, for Mr. Doherty? All right, I think we're all set. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I have to take it down. Um, for the record, again, it's Gerald Prunier, and I just wanna make, I think you've asked all the questions and so forth, but I just wanna make a question as to Alderman Jettie. I think he's trying to conf- confuse the fact of the size of the sign and its purpose versus the traffic situation. The traffic situation's not gonna go away with the sign. It'll help, but it's not gonna go away. That's something else. I'm just, uh, I just think that he's confused both of them, because of the people talking about traffic in that area. And we are concerned about it as well, and we, I introduced Mr. Jettie, Alderman Jettie, to our clients, my clients this evening, and we're gonna certainly have some more meetings about resolving that issue. Thank you.
Actually, I have a question for you. Um, to, at the start of your presentation, you had talked about how the lot was subdivided where it used to be one. What is the zoning of the lot to the east?
Park Industrial.
And let's just pretend if, if your site was Park Industrial, what would be the size requirements?
I think it'd be up to fifty square feet, maybe even more.
I think it's a hundred square feet.
Hundred.
And is there a sign on?
Eighty-seven-five.
The building to the right? Cause I didn't think to look at that, uh, at 589.
I was, I gotta tell, I was more concerned, when I looked at the building, at this building, about being able to see it, and, um, so I didn't, I, I don't wanna misrepresent and say that I saw it. I, I don't, I don't remember seeing that sign.
Yeah, okay.
There is a small sign out there.
I, I can ask my clients.
Your clients are confirming.
I can ask my client if you'd like.
Sure, why, just, uh...
Yeah? Just stage your name.
Amy Bottomley. Maverick actually has three or four signs. They have a huge one effaced on their building. They also, what's confusion, confusing is we share an entrance. So the 589 sign that they have, that's just solely a pedestal with the light and the number, is at our entrance, we share it. Then they have another one when you drive in and it says Maverick Technical Institute. So it, it, it looks like we're one in the same property, which is why we wanna sign on the other side, to separate the two buildings, if that makes more sense. They have a lot of signage, and quite large on the building.
All right, thank you. Oh, wait, actually, Mr., uh, oh, he had a question for Mr., uh, you're all set, yeah.
Thank you. Again, Gerald Prunier.
So, to Mr. Currier's point, um, the lot next door, that next door is zoned differently. So this sign would be, I'm gonna guess, twenty-five feet away from the property line, with, from the, from the different zone, right?
Yeah.
From the other zone. So it's not, it's not at the point of the triangle, it's, it's, it's at that entrance, right? So the point is, is it's really almost abutting the, the other, the other property, which is zoned differently.
We do, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And then that's why some people that look for their eye doctor still go there, because the two buildings are, go back to Darmstadt. And that was in case you were looking for your eye doctor.
Thank you.
Uh, actually, I had one other question for you. Were there any other questions, anybody else? Um, so, when we heard Attorney Jettie's, uh, opposition, was, was that, I'm just, was that a surprise? Did you know that there was kind of opposition to it? Had you tried to work it out with him, and you said you were gonna be meeting with him? I'm just wondering, uh, if you would care to share any history of that.
The first time I heard, uh, of Attorney, Alderman Jettie being involved was this morning, and that he had sent my client a, an email indicating that there was traffic in the area, and it all, it all had to do with traffic, not with sign. So, knowing Ernie for a long time, I called him and said, you know, "What are your concerns, if you have any, and do it, because traffic is really not what the board is concerned with tonight. They, they, they don't concern traffic. If it's traffic, we, we should get together and go ahead and have a meeting, um, with you and my clients and whatever else from the city, which probably would be something from the planning department, to talk about traffic and make recommendations as to what everybody agreed to, to try to solve the issue." He, he said, "Yes, but I've talked to the people in the area and I told them I was coming tonight, so I gotta come tonight." I said, "Come on, board won't bite you."
All right, thank you. A question from, by Mr. Shaw?
Just one more thing that I think, um, cause it was alluded to earlier, um, I don't know that you would have the, the numbers, but in case you might, or, so, just as far as like the, this thirty-two square feet, is that pretty comparable to the bicentennials and New Surals and Charlotte Avenues and all those? Is it, you know, would you say that is comparable to all those other elementary schools?
Based upon what we were told by the, uh, sign guy, yes. Lot smaller than the one that Alma Street, that I'm familiar with. That's, that's much bigger, but that's similar to what schools are. And I think Bishop Gerton had, Bishop Gerton's an electric sign, I think, so it's, it's different.
But it's just, basically, it is a comparable type of sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought, I just, again, if you had any extra info. All right, thank you.
All right. Uh, was there anybody else to speak in favor? If you'd like to come to the microphone and give us your name and address and let us know what's on your mind.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I can see everybody's stifling yawn, so I won't be long. My name's Jamie Haw. Uh, my address is twenty-seven Hydeaway Lane in Hollis. I'm a trustee of the Micro Society Academy. I'm also a property owner in Nashua. Um, I wanted to address some of Alderman Jett's, um, comments, um, because unfortunately, uh, he hasn't been able to come and visit us on campus and get to know the Micro Society Academy. We've invited him, and I'm sure he will come and visit us at some point, but some of the things that he was able to say to you might have been different if he'd been able to come and see us, so I just wanna talk about that a little bit. Um, he talked about parents and vendors, once they had found us, would be able to find us again, and I think that's true. But what's much more important is that people understand what a Micro Society Academy Charter School is, and that's, in my opinion, as a trustee, the most important reason that we need a sign out there. Because if the community doesn't know that there's a school there, that's a big problem. But if they don't know there's a Micro Society Academy there, that's an even bigger problem. So you have the power as a planning board to kinda snuff out the mission of that school by preventing it from interacting with the community. And the reason I wanna make that clear is, a microsociety operates like a little society. The kids have jobs, they get paid in microsociety dollars, they pay taxes out of those little salaries they get, and they run a little government, they have peacekeepers, they have courts, they have businesses, post offices, warehouses, um, and they have community advisors for their operations. They have robotics teams coming up, they have community advisors for that. They have the Jean-Dart Credit Union that comes in, they have bank accounts where they make their deposits and pay their taxes and keep their accounts, and they have community advisors for that. I give you all that kinda detail so that you understand how critical it is to us in delivering the education of a microsociety to the kids, that we interact with the community and have them know what we do so they can come in and be advisors with us. The model works extremely well. You don't need to know that, except that, having been there for a couple of years, we've won a bunch of awards and raised test scores extremely high. I mean, we, you know, we're winning awards and, and the, the model works extremely well, so we wanna put it out there and invite people in. So we're just about to start up some robotics teams, and we need to find some female engineers to advise some of the elementary school teams that are gonna be half girls. So a big sign on West Hollis Street where we can say, "Hey, no female engineers that are qualified to advise robotics teams." Now, we mo, we, you know, we can't send newsletters to those people because we don't know who they are. So we need a sign big enough to grab the attention, not of existing parents and existing vendors, but more than any other school in the city, more than any other school in the state of New Hampshire. We're the only microsociety school in the state. We need to reach out to all those hundreds, thousands of people that go up and down West Hollis Street every day. I've forgotten what the number was when they told us how many. Thousands and thousands of people that go up and down that road every day. They're an incredible resource for our students, and we need to be able to reach them. So, that's why I want you to know kind of what a microsociety is. And a thirty-two-foot sign is really critical to us fulfilling our mission there for those kids. Thanks.
Um, just, uh, any questions, uh, from Ms. Hoff? I guess I, I had a question for you. I, I didn't realize, so, when you say "microsociety," that is like a, a type of school then? I, I thought it was your, just, just a name.
No, it's a type of school model. The kids are in grade levels, um, maybe the principal should talk about this, but we, it's K through eight, K through eight, and they're, spend a great deal of their school day in the regular state of New Hampshire curriculum, and they test extraordinarily well. We're so proud of their test scores. They come to us and it's a regular, you know, public school population, they get in by lottery, we don't have entrance exams or anything like that. But the, they have these roles within the school, that every student has a job. And they fulfill that role in the microsociety periods of the week, and they get paid for that, and then they pay their taxes, and they put in entrepreneurship proposals if they wanna start a business, and then during the entrepreneur, during the microsociety periods, they run those businesses and make income, and, and so they, it, it teaches participatory citizenship in, in an extremely effective way. It's, it's an extraordinary model, and it's how I happened to get involved.
All right, thank you for that answer. Any other questions from Ms. Hoff? All right, we're all set, you can have a seat, thank you. Was there anybody else to speak in favor of the proposed sign? Was there anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition of the proposed sign? No opposition, so I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts on the matter, Mr. Lionell?
Um, I'm actually more convinced by the argument that, not that people need help finding the school, but people need help finding where the school isn't. Um, and, uh, I, you know, I don't have, I, I think the si, the size of the sign that's being proposed is, um, is reasonable for the use, it's reasonable for the area, especially as it's right on the edge of the, the zoning line where a much bigger sign would be proposed. Um, I'm, I'm in favor of the, of the request.
Ms. Vitale?
Um, after all the testimony, I would, I would probably be in favor of the sign too, knowing the location next to property. I still think as far as an identification sign, I'd really pull that 591 and put it down on the pillar.
Yes.
To stand out. Um, it'll make it so much easier to find that exact spot for the 591, to be able to pull into that area and know it's on that side of the drive versus the other side of the drive. I, I've been down that road so many times, and that's what sticks in my mind, is those numbers. Once, once it's there, they're gonna read the sign, they're gonna be able to confirm that the 591 matches up with the Micro Society Academy, and then further be able to look at every, whatever signage is on there. But I, I would really pull that 591 down to the pillar and make it much bigger, and I, I would approve it that way.
Thanks. I'll just keep going. Around the table, Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I was somewhat concerned initially about the size, but I think, um, I think there's a lot of reasons to, again, help identify this. I also think, generally, uh, this board has been pretty supportive of these kind of signs for, for schools, uh, in the different districts, uh, and oftentimes are actually dealt, dealing with something that's in a, you know, completely residential district, uh, not even on an edge of districts. So, I think especially in this case, being in the setting on West Hollis Street and being right next to, I mean, literally feet away from, uh, the zone that would allow a sign two, three, four times this size, uh, I, I think this is, is reasonable, and I, again, yeah, I'd advocate for the same thing with the 591 and a much larger size on the lower part of the, the sign.
Mr. Bouchet?
Uh, I'll, uh, agree with my, uh, with my, uh, members of the board also, um, and, you know, again, I, I think that the position of the sign, I mean, there's no concerns for safety, um, and there's, um, no issues with sightlines, so, and I think that, um, it'll, it'll, um, it will serve its purpose as intended, and I think there's a lot of good reasons for that. But, but again, um, I echo my fellow board members' reasons for approval.
Just see a hand in the air before I get to Mr. Welch.
Um, yeah, before you went on, I, I just happened to think, just so it's not lost, and I'm sure they're gonna take care of it, but it was miss, mentioned by, um, the alderman and brought up again about the school crossing signs, and, um, that's probably something that the alderman can take care of, to write up something, um, to have those extended so they include this school, and, uh, it'll go, it'll be referred to the Board of Public Works at that time.
Thank you. Mr. Welch?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with the rest of the board. I, I think, after hearing the testimony, I understand the need and, and recognize it. Um, if this does carry forward, I, I hope they consider changing the design to make it more effective than as it's proposed, but that would be up to them. But I, I understand the size and I support it.
All right, thanks. Um, I certainly feel better about the size of the sign, hearing the testimony tonight. You know, I, certainly Alderman's, his testimony does give me pause, you know, I, I, there's been a, a pretty consistent message on this corridor, this part of Nashua, regardless of who the alderman is, of a lack of creeping out of, uh, business and commercialization, uh, you know, going down West Hollis Street. I just, uh, I wouldn't wanna hold up approval of this application. What was, thought was in my head was perhaps the opportunity for the alderman, maybe a two-week opportunity for the applicant to meet with the alderman and just, uh, uh, you know, see if a comfort level couldn't be resolved between the both, maybe also giving the alderman an opportunity to better understand what's going on, to go back to his constituents if he's getting pressure there. I didn't know if there was any, um, maybe support of that idea on the board, or, I mean, it sounds like there's pretty much approval among the four voting members here. Ms. Vitale?
I don't think there's any reason to hold it, to, to let that take place, but I, I think it would be an opportunity, and it was alluded to, that they would like to meet with Alderman. But the aldermen usually have, um, a period where they have a meeting with, for their ward, and it'll be a good opportunity for, uh, for this academy to go there and, and be part of one of those meetings, and I'm sure the alderman will be more than happy to, uh, to extend that type of invitation.
Sure. Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I, I don't think we need to hold it up, but I, I do think that Alderman Jettie was, was noting pretty, uh, strong concern about, and trying to already work what he could in terms of traffic issues in that stretch of West Hollis Street, and clearly the school is concerned about that as well, so I think, I think there's a common interest, uh, that the school and the alderman have. school and the alderman have, just in terms of traffic concerns and things that might be able to be done, whether it has to do with the actual markings for the school zone, or enforcement, or whatever other things might be able to be done. I think it's a good opportunity for connection anyhow that they, I think they both will want to make. I, I don't believe the sign is, is really going, I think if anything, I'm more comfortable with the sign actually helping to function, to alleviate a little bit of, of maybe negative things going on with traffic and finding the way there. I don't think it's going to be a, probably that significant one way or the other, but I don't think it's going to negatively contribute to, to the traffic issues there. So again, I'm, I don't think we need to hold it up.
All right, somebody like to make a motion, Mr. Lionell?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion, owner is Haven NNN Investments LLC, the applicant is Microsociety Academy Charter School, 591 West Hollis Street, they're requesting a variance from land use code section 190 102, table 102 dash eight, to allow an identification sign at 32 square feet in size, when 12 feet, square feet is permitted, this is in the R9 zone. The variance is needed to allow people to find the property and to not confuse it with other properties in the nearby, that are nearby. The special conditions of the, the property, the fact that it was split from another, another lot, create this circumstance, there's no other reasonable way to address this. It's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, it, we don't believe will have any effect on property values, we've heard no testimony about that one way or the other. We've heard testimony in both sides that it's for the public interest, with some suggestion that it would exacerbate traffic, but the board does not believe that that's really the case, and substantial justice to the applicant would be served. So the motion is to grant the variance.
And that's seconded by Mr. Shaw, is there any discussion on the motion? I'd like to say a couple of things, I said at the beginning, I just want to clarify that Ms. Vitale is going to be voting on this case, and I wanted to say for myself, while I had pause at the, you know, because of Alderman Jettie's testimony, the other fact which I probably should have mentioned when we were speaking just a few minutes ago, the fact that this was subdivided, and when it was subdivided, this building was already present, and really, the building in my mind has always been a part of the Park Industrial Zone, not the residential zone, and this would be perfectly permitted in the Park Industrial Zone, and that to me is a very unique situation, specific to this property, which, you know, gives me, you know, makes me able to support this application. Mr. Shaw?
Just a little bit further, I know it was stated in testimony and essentially alluded to in the motion, but there is the whole shared, excuse me, shared driveway aspect to these two properties as well, so it even further kind of muddies what's going on there. So I think that's, that's another part of why this will be helpful.
Any other discussion on the motion? Show of hands in favor of the motion, so that's approved, so congratulations on that. And again.
You hear him use that line, you better ask for credit.
Was, did we have an agenda for the next meeting?
Actually, no, because there's an extra week in the agenda, the, the next meeting is until February 13th, so we have, it's pretty much all written up, right now we have five cases, and I, I don't really see anything that would be regional impact, but I'll probably have it written up in the next day or two, I'll email it to everybody and you'll have it.
The other thing is, you know, typically, we, we vote for officers in the beginning of the year, I was hoping Mary Ellen, I thought we'd have all five of us here, I didn't know if she was interested, I hope she isn't running for something, but I, I thought it'd be prudent to have that discussion and vote when the five full members are here.
I'm not going to be here on the 13th.
Because Mr. Shaw originally wasn't going to be here all February, but then you thought you might be here?
We'll be here the 13th, but the 27th, I'm actually flying back from Japan, so I probably won't make it that night.
If, would it, would be, would the board be amenable to just having that vote as soon as the five full members are here and just carrying on as is to the, in the meantime?
I agree.
All right, we'll just, we'll just do that, and maybe, hopefully, hopefully the first week of March, the, we'll all line up.
March 13th.
And we'll, we'll be here. Was there any other business before the, oh, we have.
There, there was, there were no minutes.
Yes, that's right, yeah.
So I think that was all we had.
And as, as far as, as far as the upcoming agenda, is there any likely regional impact?
I don't think so, I don't remember any of the cases being regional impact, they're mostly neighborhood ones, single-family ones, nothing like a mall or an extremely large development at the city border or anything like that, not that I remember.
Ma'am, did you, did you have any questions?
This is Kate Poirier, she's, she works in our department, I don't know if any of you have met her yet.
No, actually we haven't.
She started a couple of months ago, she's a zoning coordinator.
Oh, all right.
She took the job that Mindy just had recently.
Oh, okay.
So obviously, you know everybody's name, because I mean, she sends out the packages.
We've corresponded.
Yeah, so some of you may have met her, but she wanted to come in and sit on a meeting, and she might sit on, sit in on a few throughout the year, and, so anyway, this is Kate.
Welcome.
Welcome. I also say, and it seems that sign cases take longer than other cases, so even though it was only an agenda of three, it was kind of a long for three, but welcome to City Hall and thanks for helping us out.
We should get you to a microphone if you're going to say much more.
Yeah.
It's just not a testimony, but now she's.
We're still officially meeting though, so.
That's right.
It's still nice to meet.
Well, welcome.
Now you know what she looks like, you probably see some emails from her or something, so.
All right, welcome. If there's no other, is there any other business before the board tonight? Seeing none, I ask, make a motion to adjourn at 9:06, seconded by Mr. Shaw, all in favor, and that's unanimous, so we are adjourned at 9:07.